All right, hello and welcome to the East Hampton City Council Ordinance Subcommittee. Today is January 8th, 2019. The time is?
High 15.
Five fourteen. Present is myself, Ellen Zarrett, and?
Councilor Coniff.
Thank you. Councilor Coniff, did you receive the minutes that I sent out?
From?
From, actually, they're from last, they're from la, no, they were from, I sent them out last night, I believe, they were from last?
Yeah, I?
They were from our last meeting.
And I, well, I, what, I haven't looked at them.
Okay, well, that's fine.
But I also think that I may not have been here for it, was I?
You were here, that was the discussion with, about the, I don't think we've had a meeting since last time.
Oh, it was, I totally take it back, everything I said, because I was, it's a different minutes that I haven't read yet. I read it, I agree with it, it was the discussion where we were talking about consumption outside, and the chief was here, yep, I read all that.
Okay.
So we're good, I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve your minutes from the last meeting.
And second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, minutes approved. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak? Okay, no public speak time. Is it okay with you just to go straight to new business and then we can, okay. So, I, and I apologize too, so new business is the proposed zoning amendment for cannabis equity applications, and I apologize that you did receive what I sent you earlier today. Let me pull that up in my thing here. Sorry, I'm in the wrong. Not that, not that. Bear with me.
No worries.
There we go. Okay, so, do you want me to, you want me to explain this, or is there any, do you have any, is there any discussion off the top?
Yeah, well, let me just, for clarity.
Yes.
So this, where you say, add the following definitions to section 1010.3?
Yes.
That's all of that up to where you say amend section 1010.4.4?
Correct.
All of that goes into the definitions?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and actually, so, and, and, I will, so, and then since I said this to you, I spoke with Commissioner Tidal from the CCC again, and there's some of these, specifically the minority business enterprise and the women business enterprise definitions can be significantly amended, and can basically just say, and I will tell you, that, the minority business enterprise could simply state, minority business enterprise, so definition would be means, minority business enterprise means a minority business enterprise is certified by the Massachusetts Supplier Diversity Office period.
So question?
Yes.
So, I'm a business?
Yes.
And I'm saying that I am, from an equity perspective, I'm, I'm looking for an equity license, and the reason I fall into that category is because if you look me up, isn't that what you just said?
Mm-hmm.
We'd find them as considered, per the definition you just said, somewhere in a database, and that's how we'll know that it's okay to give them a license.
It's on a, I don't think it's a database as much as, if you look at the Massachusetts Supplier Diversity Office, they have a list of definitions, what is considered minority, minority business enterprise. I don't think they apply, I don't believe, and I can clarify this, that they, that someone would apply to have that title bestowed on them.
So that drives my question, if we, as a city, are to look at applicants in a non-equity and an equity category?
Correct.
And somebody comes in and says, I am in the equity category, first of all, do we determine that, or they tell us that? How do we determine that they meet the appropriate criteria?
I think that they would, it would be part of their, their, they'd have to prove as part of their special permit application that they followed in the criteria. And I, and I think the, I think the easiest, oh, and so, just to take two steps back to, just for the sake of nomenclature, there's something, there's a, the state has a social equity program, so for the sake of confusing what we're gonna, what we're, I'm proposing we call equity applicants with the social, with social equity program applicants, it was recommended to me to change the name of what I'm recommending, and so I changed, I changed?
To parity?
The parity.
Yeah.
Yes.
So?
Okay, so?
Again, if, if I'm a parity applicant? Someone, I guess, the board, the zoning board, or whatever, they will go through and vet that the applicant fits into one of these categories.
Correct.
How they do that is not our concern, like, because I would, it wouldn't be apparently obvious to me how I would know who or what has applied for a social equity program. Like, how would I know?
Right, so, and that, and I think that's a great question. I think that that would be part of the review process, is to determine if they meet any of the, if they meet this criteria.
And they would have, but they'd have to show proof to us.
They would have to show proof, so for instance, I mean, just going down the list, so, and just, and pardon me too, just for the sake of public record, so the list currently that I had recommended was either someone who's an economic empowerment applicant, that's cert, that's a program, that's certified by the Cannabis Control Commission, someone who's an applicant from the social equity program, which is also another, a program that's sponsored by the state, minority business or woman business enterprise, which is more kind of a classification, and then majority-owned East Hampton resident business or cooperative vote, cooperatively-owned entity, so co-op or, so that's the force of it. So, I would, I have to, so you ask a good question, and so I think we probably, maybe we'd have to maybe put something in here that they'd be required to submit a letter with their application for review by the planning board?
That?
Why they meet this criteria?
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna have to be, yeah, I mean, they have to prove that they meet one of these criteria.
Mm-hmm.
And while the definition is like this, the, the planning board may in fact want to have their own criteria behind this criteria, that if you're, if you're saying you're number one, you've got to give us a document that says that you are an economic empowerment applicant, blah, blah. If you're number two, there must be some form. If you're number three, there must be a way to determine if you're a minority business enterprise.
Well, I think one, one thing that's probably potentially easy, I mean, so I don't, I mean, I'll, I'll proclaim a little ignorance, how, how the planning board manages applications, like, for instance, is it received and reviewed before they go to, before they go to a meeting? I don't know.
Yeah.
Is there a review process, does the planner review it before giving it to the planning board, to make sure everything's in order before they can even move forward? One thing that I think we could, I think the easily, easiest solution would be that they have to submit, like, a cover letter to probably the planner, we should probably pull Jeff Bag into this, who I've spoken to about some of this, by the way.
Don't you think the, the CCC probably already, if, if this is their program, wouldn't they already have a way to ascertain this, and subsequently, couldn't we just mimic that and say, if you're one, you're gonna have this form?
Oh, yeah.
Two, you're gonna have this one.
Yes, so one and two are easy.
Yeah.
Three and four are not as easy, because that, those are more categories that I'm suggesting here on the local level.
So those are the ones you're adding? Are you adding all these?
Uh?
Or is the CCC currently, is it just?
Well, the CCC, so the CCC has, has these programs, but they're, but they don't really have, like, a state level, I, they do have, on the state level, they do have, they do have, like, a priority process, but they don't have really, like, a, they don't have their own version, they're?
They're not balancing the licenses in any sort of equitable way?
Correct.
Just first in, first out?
Yes, I, but I believe that they've, but my, and forgive me if I'm taking, if I'm understanding this wrong, my conversation with, with the commissioner was that they, they do, they do get priority, just like the, the RMDs got priority application status, they were, they're giving priority to the economic empowerment applicants, like, they go to the, they go to the, they go to the top of the pile.
Okay.
And so?
So you're expanding that for East Hampton, to say, certainly those people, the economic empowerment applicants, social equity program applicants, is that something that the CCC also is, okay, and then minority business, you're saying, add that to the list?
Yeah, I mean, that's just basically, and again, actually, then this was, that was actually a recommendation, and I'm a little embarrassed I missed it, to be honest. So the minority business and the women business enterprises was actually a recommendation of Commissioner Tidal.
Okay.
She said, what about minorities and women? I said, you're right, because if you look, go through the whole CMR definition for economic empowerment applicants, like, it, it doesn't necess, and I, that, it was almost like my inference that to, to, to fall into that category, you're very likely a minority, but it's not necessarily true. And so explicitly, you know, minorities and, and I think, and women-owned entities should be, we should find ways to empower that, that was her suggestion, that was kind of a, a no duh type of thing, and so that's why I included those, but I think, I think there's, I think to answer, so the easiest answer to your question is to probably talk to Jeff Bag, I should let me make a note. Like, how, like, is there, is there a process when the city receives a special permit application where it's all reviewed before it even goes anywhere, and is deemed complete?
Yeah.
Right, there's gotta be.
Yeah, I would think so.
So, sorry, I don't know. So, but you do, I mean, it's a valid, it's a valid question, and obviously, it'd make, we have to make, like, how does, I mean, there must be, just, much, much as the RMDs get priority, there must be some way of going through that, knowing in that application that it's an RMD applying, so it's probably reviewed?
Right, there has, something has to give it a flag.
Right, so?
I don't know what that is.
How are special permit applications?
And I say this because we want to be very clear on what group will, you know, if we have all of our, call them non-parity licenses done, and we have three that are parity, we have to be very clear about who qualifies to get one of those three. So when you talk about a minority, my first question is, if it's a completely gay-run community, is that the minor, or company, is that the minority?
Mm-hmm.
Or if it's all lesbians, does that fall into women? Or does it, like, and I know that doesn't matter?
Right.
In the great scheme of things, but we need to be very clear so that someone who wants to use that license understands that they absolutely fit into one of these categories.
Right, so, what we should do, so, we should?
I wonder if there's a legal definition, I guess, is what I'm saying, where?
Well, there, there is a legal definition, so there, that's all right, I didn't pick you off.
Is that, is that what you have here?
Yeah, so the Massachusetts Supplier Diversity Office, you know, oh, so it says certified, so they have to be certified, sorry.
Where are you looking?
I'm looking at the revision of the definitions for those things, where it says that they're certified, but, so, so someone probably has to apply to the Massachusetts Supplier Diversity Office, has a minority business or woman business enterprise, and they're certified, so they can provide all that, our certification.
Where are you seeing?
I, it's something I'm reading to you, because I, I initially included these really bulky definitions.
Oh, okay.
And, and then, again, I spoke to Commissioner, who's really helpful with this, and she said, oh, yeah, I probably should have told you just to write this. So, yeah.
Okay, as long as there's a?
A certification process.
Yeah, then we're, I'm good with it.
And then, I mean, you know, so for the residency aspect, we probably then have to put our own requirements there, right? So someone would have to prove?
Voter, do, we care, we don't care if they're a voter, they just need to be a resident.
They need to be a resident, they'd have to, they'd have to be able to demonstrate proof of residency for at least one year. And so, so we need to provide proof of residency, and, and we could probably come up with some pretty standard, I mean, there's pretty standard, like, you know, utility bills for a year, or a driver's license, or something, something like that, so we could?
Do we care, so, question, is this continuous duration of at least a year prior to submitting your application, or from the point of, like, when does that year begin and end?
I think prior to submitting application, I think people need to show?
So we, you have to have been looking at it for?
Yeah, continuous duration of, of one year, you know, if in parentheses, so I'm adding, prior to submitting, I think that's a great question. But yeah, I mean, I think we want someone who has shown that they're investing in the community, and I, and I would seriously doubt anyone who moved here for a year for the purpose of opening a, if they moved here just to do that, and lived here for a year, I significantly doubt that they would open a business here and then move away.
Sure, sure.
And even if they, well, yeah, I think that's a lot of effort, I think, so.
I think, now, my question is, in having that as an equity thing, are we actually being unequitable? Because we have folks who are getting non-parity licenses, who we don't have a requirement at the end of the town.
Yeah, well, I think, I think my, my, so, a couple things, so, one is that I, I, I structured some of these requirements after Somerville, who drafted similar ordinance, that was what I initially submitted, and then, like, decided I needed to go back to the drawing board, because there were a lot of, after talking to, to Jeff Bag, there were a lot of things that just didn't fit, and it wasn't, it was forcing the, Somerville's, Somerville's pegged into the East Hamptons. Anyways, it didn't fit well, so, so the residency requirement was one thing that they had, the economic empowerment thing was something they had, the cooperative-owned entities was something they had. I think all of these are different ways of creating equity, and so?
I guess it only has to have one of them.
It's one, it has to have one of them, exactly, so you don't have to be both a minority and have a lived in East Hampton. All of these are people, this is just my perspective, so all these are, are people that I would hope we could support buying businesses here, so, like, so?
I just have a thought.
Okay.
This number five, owned by East Hampton residents, so in any other way, they don't have to be a minority?
Correct.
It could be a bunch of people who want to put a business together.
That's correct.
Why should they get one of these other licenses? Why should they be able to get one of the equity licenses that really what we're trying to do is to give people who otherwise would not maybe get the opportunity, an opportunity? These folks would likely be able to get one of these other licenses.
And they certainly could, right? But I think what we're seeing a lot with the industry is we're seeing a lot of the, like, large corporations who are from elsewhere, and looking for community, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not faulting them for doing so, for investing in our community, but, but a lot of what you're potentially seeing is, is people seeing communities that have established, you know, good, robust cannabis ordinances, and then, and investing in there from afar, and not necessarily having a person on the ground. And so this is kind of supporting local business, so to speak, where we're, where we're specifically setting aside an option for East Hampton residents to, to own businesses in the community where they may get crowded out by, so, for instance, someone who lives here, a lot of this is all about the fact that it takes a long time to raise capital for these businesses, so, so many of these other businesses that are coming in, they can, they can come in with a large amount of cash like that, and they immediately crowd out all the local, all the local people, who may have to take a lo, much longer time, but, you know, local, local people, minorities, et cetera, who are gonna have a lot, fewer resources to raise that money.
Yeah.
So it kind of guaran, well, it doesn't guarantee them a spot, but it gives them a much, a path of less resistance against kind of potential, you know, larger business being that, if that, if that makes sense.
No, it does. I, I think, though, that we need to keep talking about number five, only because I think there are ways to get around it that would have the opposite effect that we intend.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to make sure that if we have something in there that, that incentivizes residents of East Hampton, that we can be sure that it's, it's a group of people who live here, as opposed to 51% of the people who live here?
Right.
And 49% from New York.
Well, I'm, and I'm all for making it more than 51%, too, I just recommended that, like, as a majority, but I mean, I'm up 75%, I mean, I just, I mean, as with a lot of things, I kind of try to, like, paint in broad strokes, so that we could then look at these and say, you know, what, what can we change?
Yeah.
But I don't disagree with what you're saying, and?
It's just fuzzier than the other ones, you know, like, you can't, you can't, and it's, and it's giving an opportunity, so I guess what I'm saying is, it's giving an opportunity for this group to be able to get a license in either category.
Right, and so, for instance, if I'm following you correctly, you could have some resident from East Hampton who has very few resources, but then takes on a partner who, from, they're, and they're basically like, they're like, almost like a figurehead, so to speak, yeah. So, I mean, the simplest solution to that might just need to raise the?
Percent?
But it's, it's the majority of the ownership. So what determines ownership?
Well, and I guess all of these groups can get a, a license under either category.
Yeah, exactly, anyone?
I mean, if we have five non-equity, and a minority business comes in?
They certainly, yeah, they can, yeah.
What, really what you're saying, I just want to talk it through so I fully understand.
Yeah.
So what you're really saying is, of all of our licenses, let's just carve out some that we reserve for people in this category, they may also be able to get one in the other category, and great on them if they do.
Right.
But for these three, you, we're gonna just set them aside for just these people.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Because a lot, most of these categories, and I agree with you on category five, but most of these are typically business owners that would otherwise be marginalized or disenfranchised because of people with a lot more money from, you know, other states, or internationally, or, but I don't disagree with you about potentially increasing the, the percent ownership requirement for East Hampton residents, and I would certainly entertain, I mean, three quarters? I mean, what determines ownership, too?
Right, is it the net worth, or the?
Right, I mean?
Funding?
Right. And I mean, we could also write after, I'd have to decide where in the ordinance it could be, but I mean, we can, we can definitely put a clause about just basically, you know, having to prove, prove that they, prove that they, that these categories apply to them, that these criteria apply to them. Right, like, must submit some sort of?
Yeah.
Must submit proof of, you know?
And they wouldn't have to if they were gonna go for a non-parity license?
Yeah.
Because we don't care.
Correct.
And if they get it, good on them.
Right.
But if they're, if those are all gone, and they're going after one of these three, now they gotta prove it.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
But, would you, do you feel like we should change the recommended?
I now think 51% will work. It could easily shift, you know, you could get 51% at the time you did it, and then those 51 sell it to New York, because now they've got a good, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
But maybe that's commerce.
Right, I mean, you can't, I mean, any of these applicants could sell their business.
Yeah, I mean, it happens with liquor licenses, too.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, let's ruminate on this a little more, because we're not gonna vote tonight.
Not at all, I mean, I just wanted to, like, I just wanted to start.
Let's highlight that as another talking point, and we'll think about it a little bit.
Yeah.
That might be worthy of?
So?
Conversation, maybe, with the planning board people.
So, and, and, and let me just write down for myself, so what, what exactly, so, I wrote, so we need to provide proof of residency, should they submit a letter to the planning board explaining how they meet the criteria, obviously, what's the process of?
Vetting?
Vetting or reviewing, what's, what's the process of reviewing any application?
Yeah.
Because I'm sure someone's gonna, someone's got to obtain these applications and go through them and say, oh, this is complete.
Right.
So there must be a process to doing that.
And I think we should, yeah, exactly, and I think we should also put something in here that says, even if you meet one of these, you still have to meet all the other planning board, like, this doesn't guarantee you a license.
Oh, no, not at all.
So we may have to specifically state that.
Well, it just guarantees you that you're, it guarantees?
You're going after a subset?
It just means that then you're going to, that it just guarantees you a special permit application.
Yeah.
And that a, a special permit application doesn't mean it's been granted.
Exactly, so, but I mean, we may have to be very important.
Well, I mean, the language we currently have for, for people to apply doesn't guarantee them anything.
Right.
The current language just says, right, there's gonna be six retailers, we're gonna say, we're, I'm suggesting eight.
Yep.
Right, but that you're put on a different pathway for three of those in, within your special permit process, but you still have to meet everything else.
Okay.
So everyone goes through the same process, it's just how, how you get there.
Yeah, gotcha.
And kind of like?
So you have it in here, I didn't see that part.
Yeah, I mean, it's just changing that one section.
You gotta follow up a process.
Yeah, of course, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just changed that one section, you know, and just with, with, with basically putting some caveats on it, basically. So, and I had also, so I also had suggested, too, that, much like on the state level, that on the local level, that the, that the planning board put parity applicants to the top of the pile during the reviewing and meeting on that, which I thought was just, you know, just in parallel with the state's doing.
So they can jump the line, essentially?
They could ju, they could jump the line, right, and they're not really taking away anything from anyone, they're just getting?
Because they're going after that pool, these people aren't even, yeah.
Right, and then, either, either, either classification is still first come, first served.
Right.
But in terms of expediting, you're getting your business open, the, the parity applicants as a, as a whole get to be put through the process first, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you, do you like this idea in general?
I do, I do, I, what, what I, so, yes.
Okay.
What I'm looking at is to make sure that we are fair in how we do let people jump the line?
Right.
That we're very clear?
Mm-hmm.
About how that is all, I don't want it to be vague? That we're very clear, so that people putting in your application go, oh, we qualify for that, I'm checking that box so I can get a, and that they can prove it, and that the process is still equitable to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I'm concerned about, so.
Yeah, I think that we can put, I think the simplest thing to do without listing out every single thing, too, is when it says, you know, if they meet the following criteria, we could probably just put something vague, like, and must submit appropriate documentation to prove that they meet any of these criteria. So, you know, it's up to, it could really be up to anybody how they're gonna prove that they're an East Hampton resident for a year.
Right.
Right, I mean, like, I, I mean, as long as?
Well, we can, we can dictate, though, we can say?
We can dictate, I mean, we can?
Utility bills at your address.
Sure, but I mean, and so we could list it out, but that's what I was saying, if you're, if you're vague, and that someone chooses to bring you, you know, cable bills, and say, oh, I'm just thinking of an example, if we say, like, gas bills, and they bring you electric bills, like, as long as it's, like, providing you?
Right.
Residency information, I think that, you know, it could be up to the discretion of the, I don't know, we could think about it.
Should we do, would it make sense to, once we kind of get this, or maybe even now, to have a conversation with Jeff?
Yes.
And Velch, what's her name, Velch or Jimmy?
Jesse, yeah.
Yeah, just to kind of find out what their process is, are we stepping on it, are we kind of going around it?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we should probably check those boxes with them.
I, I agree, yeah, so, like, I like this part, and wherever. I, I agree. Yeah. So I like, I like this part and where I wrote, uh, need, need, what is the review of, what's the process of reviewing, um, what is the process of reviewing any applications on, on Jeff's bag? Um, let me do this again. How, how, how does the planning board determine a, an application is complete? Um, I'm sure that, I mean, I will guarantee you, I'm sure it's a simple answer. Cause they've gotta go through the application and be like, oh, that would be so.
Little checkboxes and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
So those are the probably the big things we have to, we have to look into before we can talk about this more. Is that fair to say?
I would agree.
Do you have anything else you would like to discuss about this?
I think it's a great idea.
Agenda item?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Maybe move up to the old business.
What, yeah, what's the old business?
Well, the old business, the only old business really, uh, and I have, and just, and just to update you is, uh, sorry. Old business.
Is this the open carry thing?
Yes, open container. Open carry is, uh, something else. Uh, yeah. So the continued, so, so continuing business, continued review of adult use cannabis establishment topics, which we don't really have a lot of other stuff on the table. We've been talking about, um, the private plots and stuff, but I think that's kind of been tabled as a lot of, that's a very complicated discussion.
Moves.
Yeah. And then proposed city ordinance regarding open, um, consumption of alcohol and cannabis. So, um, um, get to that. So, and there were a couple of questions last time that I can address. So one is that I had included a provision in the open cannabis, well, actually, so let me go back for a second if you don't mind. The easiest thing to do first is that the open alcohol container, that is pretty, I, I just wanna say that that is pretty simple. In the sense that all I really did was increase the suggested increase of fines for twenty, for essentially for, for twenty nineteen. And imposed a couple of things. One was the school zone, um, the school zone fine. Yep. And then, um, it created a local open container, um, a local vehicle open container. So, um, which is, where did I put that? Sorry. I'm just looking.
I know we talked last time about, um, like a graduated, um, fine system. Where it starts out with, you don't get anything. You just get a warning all the way to you get the fine.
So that's how any fine system works. And I talked to the chief of police about it and, and, cause we had talked about like, some sort of warning system or that's already built into the way.
How he does the job.
Yeah, how any, how anyone does it. It's officer's discretion. There's really typically no ordinances where it details a pathway of warning and, and, uh, I mean, some, some things do, but I have, I had, I had a series of discussions with them about this and, and he's told me that that's what officer's discretion is, that, that the intention of any, any of these ranges from, get outta here, don't, to, um, I'm giving you a warning. I won't say you do this again, to imposing, um, and, and, you know, anything up to and including the total or the fine. So for instance, um, you know, so the, the, the public, public, uh, open container alcohol, so not exceeding a hundred dollars. So not exceeding a hundred dollars. So they could say, they could say, I'm gonna fine you five dollars. Right? They could say, I'm not gonna fine you anything. Um, they can arrest you. Um, so these are just kind of tools for the police to use at their discretion. And I did receive some, some concerns from one of, um, my constituents, um, Christian Zach's reader about how these, how fines can create undue, undue, um, harm to people who don't have a lot of money, which I, I agree with him there, but I, I, and I talked to the chief about it and I, and I think their intention also would be to not impose fines that are out of proportion to what people can afford.
Yep, yep.
So, um, and I thought for some reason too, and I have to confirm this, that there was a state law that's either exists or that's on the docket that addresses this exact thing, which is that you can't find someone who's like, you know, lives at the poverty level of a thousand dollars. Like it has to be disproportionate to what they can afford. And I, for some reason, I thought that existed, but maybe I misunderstood the conversation. That's something that's being proposed. But, um, I think the cannabis, the cannabis one is a little bit more, well, slightly more complicated. I guess my question would be, does the, um, do you have any concerns about the alcohol one? Were you okay with the fines and the concepts of the, you're okay with all that?
I am, yeah.
Okay. So we, I mean, we should probably, we should wait for Councilor Derby to come back and send us back.
I would say kinda where I lean on the, the whole, uh, open container ordinance is I want the chief to tell us how it should work. I mean, we want it. So we're gonna have this thing.
Right.
And if he has vetted kind of what you've written up, doable, doable, we can please that. We, this can be a tool, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
My concern is that we put something in here and he is, and he says, I have no tool to do anything with this, but he hasn't said that.
No, I mean, I ran all this by him before I even sent this to the council.
Yep.
So he, this was.
He's on board.
He's on board. This was, this was, this was reviewed by him. This was reviewed by him and Sergeant Skrimner.
Okay.
And they were perfectly fine with it. The only one he had concern about, I, the only reason I could, I included it was because, and I think we should strike it, was a provision that I got, I think from California. And again, include everything so that we could have the options.
Take it out.
Because I don't want people to feel like I'm hiding options from, in my research. So there was this one, I'm, I'm going back to cannabis now. So D on private, non-residential property, uh, cannabis consumption or display of cannabis products or paraphernalia is illegal in any outdoor, in any outdoor location if it's clearly visible from a public place. So like if my lawn abuts the sidewalk and I'm sitting there in a lawn chair, like in my private yard, I could be arrested or fined for that. I, and I think that that's way, that's just too murky. And it's, and I would suggest just take it out.
Yeah. I could see how maybe that would be relevant if you live in a very congested area.
Right.
Where that kinda stuff could really encroach on your peace of mind and all the rest of it.
Right.
Or to.
Yeah. So if you don't have an objection, I would take that out.
Yeah.
Um, and then of course I put in just kind of a waiver for, um, you know, if eventually, you know, social consumption or something comes in that it shouldn't be misunderstood that, that you can go arrest people.
Yeah. Isn't there a severability? No, that's something.
That's something else. Now, I haven't, I just haven't looked at this completely in a while. Okay. So it's interesting. So the language here, and I have to double check with someone who's a little bit more familiar with ordinances like, like Council Derby, but. So the N part also, the Parks and Rec Department made by majority vote, allow the possession and use of cannabis or alcohol. Cause it's parallel language. And the consumption thereof at Non-Tuck Park and blah, 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 for a specific event or occasion. It may impose such conditions on said sale, use of possession as it be appropriate. And then it goes on. The city council by majority vote may temporarily suspend the operations ordinance to permit this public sale user. So I guess the question is, is it, is it an either thing or a both thing? Like is it either the city council can vote and say, okay, we're having, you know, we're hosting, um, extravaganza at Non-Tuck Park? And, um, although it looks like it's very specific though, where the Parks and Rec vote. So it looks like maybe they're only limited to those ones, but can I rest A, B, or C?
So the Parks and Rec department can, are you saying can allow a party to go on in Non-Tuck? And they're the only ones that need to ask for the permit? We don't have to have like a whole.
Right.
I think that's already part of the ordinance that that can happen.
My question is, is it a both thing or is it an either thing?
I think it's a, it's a, are you talking about who has to approve the license for the park?
Well, it looks like, cause there's, it, there's, there's this one paragraph, and again, this is from, this is from, oh. Uh, there's one paragraph and it's from, this is again, parallel to what they had in, in the alcohol one was that Parks and Rec can allow possession, use of alcohol. We'll say, well, in this case cannabis.
Yep.
But can allow possession, use of cannabis consumption at Non-Tuck Park and Pleasant Green for specific event or occasion. It may impose conditions on use of sale, use of possession as it deems appropriate. That's the first part of the paragraph. The second part of the paragraph, the city council by majority vote may temporarily suspend the operations ordinance to permit the public sale, use and/or possession of cannabis and consumption thereof in any of the locations listed in paragraph A, B, or C. It may.
I think that's an or because I think the city council might, maybe that's Cotter Street. If we close off Cotter Street, that would have to be a city council, maybe Melton Park.
But if someone, but A, but, but the places listed in A, B, or C, um, sidewalk, Millside Park, but C includes Non-Tuck Park. So I guess my question is, I guess my, I guess I'd probably want clarification on that. I don't even know how to get clarification on that. Or if it could be either or. Like if someone wanted to have an event at Non-Tuck.
I guess it could be either. It could be or.
Can they come to the city council or to the Parks and Rec department? And what if the Parks and Rec department says no, then they come to the city council?
Right.
I'm curious about that and where that even came from.
Perhaps that needs clarification.
Well, here's what I would, well.
When did you put that in? Was that up to you?
Possibly. But this was, this was the language that was already in place for, for alcohol from whenever, however long ago that was. I mean, I guess the question is, who? Who enforced that? I don't know. We should wait, we should definitely wait to see what, uh, Council Derby has to say. I'm curious about that. Or if, um, I mean, yeah, I'd have to find out. I'd have to think more about that. And I don't wanna start the park step on Park and Rec's toes either, but. Are you reading on your phone?
Percent B. Actually, it's R or C as in Non-Tuck.
Yeah, it's all the parks basically. It just divides it up into different.
I would say that, uh, the city council can do whatever they want, but the Parks and Rec department for those three parks can also do whatever they want.
So it's either.
For just those three parks.
Right. So it's an either thing.
But I think.
So if someone wants to allow, sorry, go on.
I was gonna say, but I think if the Parks and Rec department, if they as a group, majority voted that they want a license for Non-Tuck Park or that they didn't, I can't imagine they would come to the city council. Who would come if they as a group? Cause we would ask them, did you do that? What was your vote?
Right.
Well, we didn't wanna do it. Well, then C.
Yeah, exactly. But the question is, do they, could they then just come straight to the city council?
I would say, yeah. I think it, I think they have two paths, right? That doesn't mean.
Well, so I wonder if we should just, if we should just make decide on one body.
And this is basically a regurgitation of the alcohol one replacing with cannabis.
It is. And it makes me wonder if then, uh.
Clearly they did it for specific events that are probably preordained, like the, the concerts and all of that. And some were up here, Non-Tuck Park, and the other parks are listed for things that are ad hoc maybe. But then why would you go to the park? Maybe, maybe it's a timing thing. I don't know.
Well, and also like they didn't, like, so they didn't list, so when I first started looking to this ordinance to, that the old ordinance was before Millside was even, it was, what was it? Flattery or something like that? So the old ordinance didn't even include Millside, Millside as, as it's now named. And so.
So you're actually upgrading the wording?
I changed the wording because it was, I think it was Flaherty before that.
Okay.
Yeah, I did upgrade the wording.
Probably be updated.
Yeah.
Officially.
Well, yeah, exactly. So if anything, we have to update that. But, but the, the thing is that, so the, what, the question is, what was the, what was, and I don't even know if we'll get, answer to this. What was the intention of the Parks and Rec approval? If it says just Non-Tuck and Mills, uh, oh wait, I included, I'm sorry, there is Millside Park. It used to say Flaherty. I'm sorry, it is there. I was looking at it.
Well, maybe you've already edited it.
I might have. It's possible. But, uh, I guess the bottom line is why would there be two pathways here? Is that confusing? And why, why would you even choose? Well, I guess how, this is how you choose because if, like, let's say for instance, we want to suspend the rules for, um, cultural chaos. Right? So that doesn't fall at all into the Parks and Rec department because it's just a public way.
Right.
So that would obviously be the city council and suspend the ordinance. But I guess if you're talking about any of the parks, it would go to Parks and Rec. It could go to Parks and Rec, except C in, in the locations is also the ones that they listed for Parks and Rec. So I don't, I don't have an, I don't have a good answer. I guess my only thought would be that if the council creates the ordinances, then maybe they should also be the ones to suspend them. But I don't know.
Yeah. I, I think F deserves, that may be something we have to talk to John about. Like, does he, under what circumstances does he and the, the department, and who's voting? The Park and Rec department?
Oh, I'm sorry. F or E?
F. Well, F.
Oh, I guess it should be F. I'm sorry. And then I, I skipped the letter. The current, the other, the F I have is probably, is should really be G. Is there another F after that?
No.
Are you on the alcohol one?
I'm on whatever you sent.
Is that alcohol or cannabis?
Cannabis. So you've got A, B, C, D, E, F, which is Parks and Rec, and then you go to G possession of.
Oh, then I have it mislabeled in my thing. That's why. Okay. Sorry.
And actually probably the city council by majority vote should be G. Cause it's just a paragraph floating out there.
Well, that's the question. Well, that's the question, right? Is it, is it, is F the, what the Parks and Rec could do?
F part one, F part two?
Or is it all, yeah, right? Or is it all together? I mean, that's the way, but again, that's the way it was in, um, in, uh, alcoholism was all, that was all up together.
I think that deserves clarification.
Yeah. I mean, the question is, do we just, I mean, and.
Do you want me to talk to John about F?
John Mason?
Yeah. In the world of alcohol today.
Yeah, talk about the alcohol part.
Does he, and how does that?
Do you have a relationship with him?
All right.
Yeah. I mean, like, cause it looks like, so let's, so put cannabis aside, that's certainly more of a hot button, hot. But like at the alcohol, um, uh, ordinance as it's currently written, um, if someone wanted to have a party where they'd be consuming alcohol at Non-Tuck, now it looks like you could either go to the Parks and Rec department or you go to the city council. Um, so.
Do you think, I'm, I'm wondering if Parks and Rec allows it for events that Parks and Rec is sponsoring? I mean, it's, we could wonder all day.
Interesting. Right. Maybe, uh, I mean, talk, how long has he been, um, how long has he been the director? A couple of years?
Phew. Oh God, more than that. Now that I say that, many years.
I'm just gonna make a quick note to, um, so that was, that's the real section F, right?
Yeah.
So F. So F. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna forget this otherwise. F. Uh, how, how does one side?
What do you do for alcohol?
Context for alcohol? Yeah, I mean, that's an important question, and it could, it does get, it does get, I mean, why not just have to be one?
Right.
Although.
Like, if we're having this kind of a conversation.
Right.
A person who wants to do a special license, if they're looking at this, they'll be like, I don't know.
I don't know who I'm supposed to go to, and I can totally understand why it's parsed out, why the council has more, um, has, has, uh, more, uh, what's the word?
Scope.
That'll broader scope over what, where they can determine.
Yep.
And the Parks and Rec has a narrower one, but like, why then isn't it, I, I don't know, I don't have a good answer.
I'll talk to John. Okay, but we never get licensed.
Right. I mean, and then again, that begs the question, should it just go to one or the other?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know. I can see it both ways, and, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll give him a shout.
Okay, so there's that, we struck that other thing, generally, so, I guess the old, so then the only issue that, obviously, in, um, the alcohol of the container is the same thing, so.
Fix one, fix the other.
So what's interesting, actually, in the alcohol of the containers, I don't think that that one was, maybe it must have been, because the way I gave it to you, it's weird that they didn't have.
Have you sent a second version from what you submitted to city council?
I'd have to look.
Because that's the one I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'd have to look why it's not, I don't have a letter for that Parks and Rec one, but it's not just, that's not a letter, because also, on the alcohol one I have, it skips straight to D. I have to look at the, I'll have to look at the original, the original, I'm just gonna type the letter to myself, but, lettering, I mean, it's not that big of a deal, but, lettering and original document. But again, it's the same le- it's the same wording there, you know, so, um, I'm curious about that, the history behind it, how it's all structured in the one paragraph.
Yeah.
Um, I'd have, and again, I have to, I have to go back and find the original wording, so.
Okay.
So we have to solve that for both of them. Um, okay. Um, all right. Anything else to discuss on that, then? Still things to figure out.
Yeah, I don't think so, that's good.
So, so my understanding, too, then, just to picture, if I'm, I'm understanding you correctly, is that thing we just discussed with the, um, suspending, uh, the ordinance, um, and who does so is probably the, the biggest issue, correct?
Yeah.
The rest of it, you're, you agree with?
I'm on board with it.
You understand, and the chief's on board with it? Um, okay. All right.
I think once we get this squared away, if we can get the final version of it, and then maybe the three of us just go through it one last time.